Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session on Tuesday, October the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at four P. M. in the Board Meeting Room at thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call to roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Moving to item three. Are there any items to be added to the agenda? Not hearing any. I'll move to item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion on the motion? Not hearing any. We're ready to vote. Alright, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded on and can be viewed on the county web Facebook as the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors' Business Meeting. Please remember that the Board's work sessions is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question and answering session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorder conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in an offending person removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties are designated by the Board's bylaws or permitted to making comments on the hearing of the citizens' sections of the night's business meeting. Moving to item five, our presentation will be five A, our county broadband update. That'll be Mr. Rob Taylor. Welcome, sir.
Just a quick overview again. Our project spans most of the county. It's going to pass over sixteen thousand five hundred locations. The county project's been funded through CAF II, ARDOF, VATTI twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as well as matching funds from the county and funds from River Street. We are currently sitting at just over, can't read it from here, just over five thousand one hundred ninety-eight locations that have access to service. We've got twelve hundred and seven locations that are in a pre-order status, which means they should be ready for service sometime in the next thirty days or so. We currently have two thousand six hundred and forty-six locations that are under construction, and typically after construction starts somewhere within ninety to a hundred and twenty days, those a hundred and twenty days, those locations should have access to service as well. Give you an update. Again, it's hard to see the, on some of the screens, the timeline, but the current timeline is showing everything should be completing by the end of next year. We have begun construction in the Braswell C.O. area. We've completed splicing and testing at Chestnut C.O. and Cabinet One. In the Strawberry area, which is also Cowans, we've completed cabinets, splicing and testing cabinets five, eight, and nine. We've started a pre-construction meeting for the Strawberries, Braswell C.O., and that's why construction has started there. And we have a contractor assigned for the C.O. and cabinets one through three, twenty, twenty-three, and twenty-eight in Braswell. Just a general information update. As of the ninth of this month, we had eight hundred and thirty-nine customers installed, which was an increase of about eighty from the last time I reported back in August of two thousand twenty-four. We have two hundred and eighty-two orders in progress, in process. That means there are either drops being installed, or we're placing the equipment on the outside of the structure, or we're actually installing the service inside the structure. Since the last report also, we've increased from four thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight locations to just under five thousand two hundred locations, or an increase of about four hundred. With a total between the locations installed and orders in process, we're sitting at a take rate of twenty-two percent, which is the same as we had last month. We have currently, again, Strawberry, which is Cowans, cabinets seven, ten, through fifteen are under construction, and Chestnut cabinets two through five and eight are also under construction. As stated earlier, the Braswell area is under construction, and we have about twelve hundred and seven locations that are in the pre-order. We continue to do multiple marketing sessions in the county to continue to entice people to sign up for the services, and we've done, since the last update, we've done four signup events, and there are three more scheduled in the next thirty days. Now, October fifteenth at the Java Volunteer Fire Department, October twenty-fourth at the Community Center, and then at the Cowans Volunteer Fire Department on November seventh. Just another reminder of our marketing efforts. We're doing not only online efforts, but we're also radio ads, especially if you listen to AKG, you'll hear us quite a bit there. We're doing brain awareness to make sure people understand whose River Street networks, what are they doing in the, in the community, as well as letting people know that fiber is coming. We normally do this through not only billboards, but also direct mailers and door hangers, as well as we'll do signs. So if you go out around, along the county, you'll see a lot of our signs along the roadways that we're installing customers or installing fiber. We also do fibers here. These are normally direct mailings to the locations when the fiber is ready to get people to sign up if they haven't already signed up for the service. We also have been doing some promotional signup deals. If you've seen this, we've got a large billboard that we've been putting these up. It's out of Danville on twenty-nine. On that billboard, I've seen these signs quite a bit. I think it currently has this, this Q-three promotion up on it. Here's some other services that we're offering. These are visible on the website, which is managed Wi-Fi services to help people get the full use of their service. What we've run into is people might get two hundred fifty, five hundred megs or a gig service, but their equipment they have in the house can only still do a hundred. So when, when they get the upgraded internet speed, but they still have old Wi-Fi equipment, they often wonder why they're still getting slow speeds. So we encourage them to go on and get a managed Wi-Fi service. That also enables us to help them remotely, because we can see into their Wi-Fi network to say, it looks like you're having an issue with some sort of device. Have you added anything to your network? You might find out that they've added something, or they've installed a wireless camera and not realize they're on the same frequency as what the wireless service was using. Again, I'd like to go over this so that citizens know that if they go to myriverstreet.net and they go down to Fiber Build and click the Fiber Build Updates, they'll take it to another page, which is on the right there, where you'll see the different counties. You can scroll down to Pennsylvania County, click on that, and it will bring up this map, which has the locations that have service available. They can either search by the map, or they can put in their address, and we encourage them to go here, register that they're interested in service, if they don't currently have service available, or if they're a green dot, they could go on and sign up for service if they're interested. The next item I want to bring up is BEAD. That's the next funding cycle that's coming through the Virginia Department of Housing and Urban Development, or Community Development, I should say. This is the federal funding. The state was, got one point four eight billion dollars in federal funding to expand broadband. D H C D is believing they're going to use about nine hundred thousand of that money to expand it and complete the broadband builds needed to reach all citizens in the state. This is a very busy map, but it kind of gives you an idea of what the BEAD funding looks like for the county. The yellow and orange blocks, those are locations that we had federal CAF II or ARDOF funds. The yellow homes, that's where we got VATTI funding. The red squares or white circles, that's where we got VATTI twenty twenty-three funding. And then the orange homes are structures that are, those are the BEAD locations. To make it a little bit easier to see, I brought it up on this map. This is a map that we're using with our engineering firm to determine what an application might look like to build. So in the county, the state is saying that there are two thousand nine hundred and eighteen locations that currently don't have a hundred by twenty service or are not funded to get a hundred by twenty service in the next two to three years. And therefore, these locations would be available for BEAD funding, and what we're requesting the county to do is provide us a letter of support. This letter of support, the D H C D recommends, is supported by the board itself. It does not restrict you from providing letters of support to other ISPs. It doesn't obligate you to match any funding. It's just as a letter of support saying that you would continue to work with the ISP or will work with this ISP to build out these locations moving forward in your jurisdiction. I've talked to Mr. Arnold. He says that this is something he could possibly bring in front of the board in the November nineteenth meeting, and I would like you to all to consider that. If you need me to come back and address this in particular, let me know, and I'll put that on my calendar. If you want me to do another update at that time, an overview of the project, let me know, and I'll do that as well. But I'm available for any questions if you have any at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
Would y'all like an update in November meeting?
I would.
I'm sure you would like to see some of the Braswell locations turn green by then, but I can't guarantee that. We're, we're working on it.
It does need to be lit up. I still get calls.
Oh, I bet you do.
Y'all be, everybody be fine with another update in November?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you do that, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I'll be back on November nineteenth. Just need to find out the time, another place, and I'll be here, and hopefully we can also get you all to give us a letter of support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you for the update.
Alright.
We're gonna move to item six A, of a solid waste and owner of staff committees and constitutional officers, solid waste water and building grounds update by Mr. Adcock. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you. As you mentioned, I'm here today to give you an update on some of our many public works, projects. The first one is the Robin Court Water Line Extension. I think some of you are familiar with that. The Robin Court Water Line, or the Robin Court Well System is just east of Chatham, and it's a well system that the Service Authority formerly, which we were formerly the Service Authority operated, probably since almost the founding of the Service Authority, forty years or so. Back in two thousand twenty, and a couple of quarters prior to that, we had some exceedances of radium, which is a constituent that the Health Department requires us to, to monitor. And because of that, we went into a consent order with the Health Department in September of two thousand twenty. While that's their enforcement method, it also is, is a good thing for the utility, because it gives us priority when we go for grants. So right after that consent order, we went into a, a, an application, and we got a planning to design fund grant that same month to do a study of the system and, and complete a preliminary engineering report. That P R was completed in July of two thousand twenty-one and approved by the Health Department in February of the following year, and that proposed the, the best solution would be a connection to the town of Chatham's water system. And the construction plans, at the time, we had looked at splitting our, some of our ARPA money, part of it going to Horseshoe Road Water Line Extension, part of it going to this project. But because we were under consent order, and we had recommendations from the Health Department that we should try to get a grant for the Robin Court project, so we decided to, to lump all of the money, the ARPA money into the Horseshoe Road project and get that done and, and the complete loop. And then we, we went ahead and started doing our engineering work, so we completed the construction plan in August of twenty-two and submitted that to the Health Department for approval. The construction funds application was submitted to V D H in May of twenty-three, and then the construction plans were approved, and we were issued a construction permit in February of twenty-four. We were awarded a grant the following month from the V D H for nine hundred and five thousand, and we were notified, and, and the grants are great, but they always come with a lot of strings attached. And because of this, because it's federal money, we were notified we had to do an environmental assessment, so that slowed us down. That environmental assessment started in March of this year, and we are still waiting on that to be completed. Just for, for comparison, we probably designed and got approval and constructed the Horseshoe Road project in a quicker amount of time than it took us to get through this funding and application and approval process for, for this, this project, just because it's a, a grant-funded project. But we are confident that that's going to be completed in the next couple of months, and hopefully we'll be able to begin construction in the next, at the beginning of the year. This is an overview of the project. We are connecting to the Chatham system. They are just on the east side of, of this, of this drawing, and it goes down twenty-nine a little ways, and we'll cross over and get on Mill Creek Road. And then a good, a good portion of this project, or a, a good component of this project, is that the well system over the years has, in addition to some of the constituents that we've had to deal with, has had a lot of sediment in the well. And we've had to do a couple of different projects to try to keep the sediment from infiltrating into the well. But over the years, the, the residential lines have become somewhat restricted by a lot of that sediment, and that's, a lot of the complaints we get are muddy water or red water. So we decided with this grant that we would go ahead and replace the services all the way up to the house. So in addition to the extension down to get to Robin Court, we're going to replace the main line on Robin Court and all of the services from the meter all the way to the house, which is typically the homeowner's responsibility, but because of this unique situation, we're going to go ahead and take care of that for them. The second project I wanted to get into...
Mr. Chairman? Question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris. So those wells will be abandoned. Is that correct?
It's just, yeah, it's just one well that serves the entire neighborhood.
Alright, that well.
And it will be abandoned, yes, sir.
It will be capped and abandoned?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all on my, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
The second project I wanted to discuss was the R and L Smith Road Water Line Extension Project. You may have noticed that was in our, in our budget for this year, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. This, a part of this project was actually already identified in the nineteen ninety-one Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, but it has never been acted on. You can see that, that's a blow up from the, that plan from ninety-one, that, that loop, they call it the eight sixty-three loop, was actually going to start and, and connect our twenty-nine system with our forty-one Mount Herman system, with the Mount Cross Road area, and also with the fifty-eight West area. So that was a much bigger project, about fifty thousand linear feet. This is a piece of that project that is, is, I think is the great starting point for that. So we also included it in our two thousand twenty-two Water and Sewer Master Plan as a short-term project that we needed to get on right away. And basically, it's, the red number five there is going to connect our twenty-nine North system close to the office tank with our Mount Herman system. And you can see, that's an excerpt of where it was identified in, in the comprehensive plan. So why are we looking for this project to be on the, on the front burner? One, it improves our system resiliency in the Mount Herman area. Currently, both of those systems, twenty-nine and Mount Herman, both have one feed from the city of Danville, so we're kind of at risk if we were ever to lose a, a pipe on the, close to the city, we would lose a lot of service area. So this allows us to backfeed our forty-one system, which is our largest system with approximately fifteen to sixteen hundred customers. Improves our, increases our operational and flexibility by being able to supply water from, from two sides. It increases the service pressure in parts of Mount Herman. I don't know if some of you have received any complaints, but we get complaints from time to time about the pressure in the upper Mount Herman area around the tank. It's very, very borderline to what we're required to give, and, and that's because of the elevation of that tank is so low, it's not able to give the pressure that we need. So the twenty-nine North pressure is at a higher pressure gradient, so it'll be able to feed the Mount Herman area with a higher pressure. And in addition to increasing the service pressure, we will also increase the fire flow availability in those areas. And basically what it does, it merges our twenty-nine North and Mount Herman's service area, allowing us to use some of the storage in the twenty-nine North area to be utilized for Mount Herman, and allow us to increase, you know, we've, we've had requests from some properties there in Mount Herman for additional residential expansion, which we all know that that's something we're looking at with a lot of the growth that's occurring in our area. And also, the, along R and L Smith Road, there's a couple of large tracks that have been identified as a, a good developable, developable residential area, so we'll be able to utilize or, or access those, those tracks. Any questions on that project?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowman?
One more question, please.
Yes, sir.
So you've got water coming in from Danville, and, and this will be coming in from the service area, up, over by where our authority is located?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in the treatment of the two waters there, are they going to be blended together, or are they going to be isolated?
No, both, they'll be blended, but both of those systems are fed by the city of Danville already.
Okay.
One of them is fed just from, up twenty-nine, from a pump station there and a master meter near, which would be distant, or the tank museum.
Oh, yeah.
And then the Mount Herman system is fed from Danville right at Orphanage Road.
Okay.
So it's the same water.
Same water.
Yep. It's just a higher, because we pump it up to a, a higher elevation in the twenty-nine North area, it's got a higher pressure, and it'll be able to serve with a higher gradient going down into, into the Mount Herman area.
Okay. I was just thinking about the treatment of the, of the water there, if there were going to be two different treatments. So it's the same water, come from the same place, it's all good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Third project I wanted to get into was our, our solid waste collection site improvements. After we completed the, the, the three new sites at Climax Level Run and Meadow Ridge, we had a couple of other projects that were, were looked at for improvements, existing sites. We completed the expansion of the Mount Herman's site last month, and the other sites that we were identified for possible updates were our Motley site, which is on Highway B Road in Hurt, and our Berry Hill site, which is just off of fifty-eight West in Danville. This is a tabulation of our tonnage by sites from January of twenty-four through July of twenty-four. You can see our Mount Herman site is, is basically double what any other site as far as the amount of tonnage that comes in. Berry Hill is about fifth of the way down, and Motley is just below that, only, it looks like about ten tons difference between, between those two sites. So the Berry Hill upgrades, what we looked at, what our engineer looked at, they identified some expansion areas up on the top area, and then down to the left of that, of that picture, there's a, a pad we were going to use for our recycling. But that site has received a, a, a lot more frequent updates than some of the other sites recently, like that, the pad there that looks like a, kind of an eye going up. That is, was built not too long ago for our open tops. And really, when I looked at this preliminary site, I didn't see a lot of bang for the buck there. I do, I would like to pursue the recycling containers down on the left-hand side, but I don't see a lot of benefit in doing the, the, the back side there. So that's one of the things that I've been kind of trying to, to grasp with, with the remaining funding that we have, is where the best way to, to expend it and get our, get our best bang for the buck. The Motley site, they looked at putting in some, some new existing gravel areas, a new compactor, better pavement markings for traffic flow, and some additional security measures. But the problem with the Motley site is that it's very, very tight. You can see the area they're looking for the new compactor is... You can see the area they're looking for the new compactor is where that open top is to the left of that picture, and it really hems us in. And that site is, it's it's very old, and it really it needs some some other TLC. So what I looked at, I was looking for some additional property, and currently I've been talking to VDOT about some some property that maybe surplus that they could, we could work out some kind of an arrangement with them and do a whole new site, because this site looked at about 330,000, and that was probably a two-year-old estimate. And we did a brand-new site at Climax for about 400, a little little less than 500,000. So I was kind of weighing those two, you know, dressing up this site that's already old and already very tight versus a new site if we could get some property. So that's kind of what I've been what I've been working on on that side. After we completed the the other additions to the Mount Herman site, we do have about 400,000 left in our compactor site improvements account. So what my goal would be to to do the recycling area pickup at the Berry Hill and some of the landscaping improvements that were shown there, and then continue to search for some new property for the the Motley-Hurt up site to upgrade that. And possibly by that time, we'll be able to allocate some additional funding in in the next in in 25, 26 to to do a brand-new site for Motley. We did go in and repair the concrete there at at the edge of that wall where you come up to to access the open top. So we have completed that recently, so it looks a lot better now. Any questions on the convenience sites?
Yes, sir, Mr. England.
Thank you, Chris. Could you go back to the Berry Hill site for a second?
Yes, sir.
Although this is in Mr. Whittle's district, we've talked about this, and I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. To the left, where you talk about the new pad, how much land does the county own right there?
Um, I'm not 100% sure, but I think it's it's probably several acres on that left-hand side.
Okay. And it's probably been two years ago, I met with a consultant, and we talked about the need to straighten out the line, to make it run parallel with 58. I can't tell by looking at this, but is that pretty much on target?
Yeah, that's what that's what's shown there at the top, and that's what I did. It's so tight there to get around behind that wall.
Yes.
I didn't see a lot of benefit in all that pavement, you're just getting one pad out of that. So I think if we can do a lot more, maybe do four pads down on that lower area on the left-hand side that you asked about the property, it might be a better a better use of of the funding if we could do that, as opposed to getting just one box there in the back. And it's still, it it still is a kind of a isolated area that people wouldn't know to go back there, and and when you have someone parked there in front of the the open top area, it's kind of hard to get around and go behind that.
Yeah, it's one way in and one way out right there.
Yep.
But yeah, I know at one time, there was discussion about instead of paving, to just simply gravel and put the box on gravel.
They did look at that in the, and I think the lower area was gravel there. I think up at the at the top, that area that you were talking about straightening out parallel to 58, I think that looks like it's pavement and and concrete pad. We'd rather put concrete for the pad to sit on, because the pavement just deteriorates of all the loading and unloading.
Yes, sir.
And then the gravel, when the truck's backed up to the pad, the weight of the truck just doesn't hold up real well in the gravel. But if that's something we can do and maximize our funding, we can certainly look at that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. England. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. I I was thinking, Chris, that we had plans to upgrade Motley, and I think maybe in the works. But do we not have property on the backside where we can, or is that VDOT's property? Or are we too close to the highway? You tell me. It's it's, I get calls on it a lot, and people go there, and they wind up going to Gretna.
Yes. So it's, we we don't have, the property behind it is is just, the highways are too close?
I understand.
And it's right away there? And, you know, the property to the right is where we built the Emergency Operations Center. Property to the left, I believe, is right away, too, and it and it narrows down.
Yes, it does.
Where the exit ramp comes up.
Because the ramp, you go right up, and you get right on the ramp.
So it just, it seemed to me, you know, I mean, I'm one individual, but I do have a background in engineering, that it just seemed like it was trying to cram too much into that site, that I would much rather try to find a piece of property that we can kind of replicate the Cal, the Climax site, because I really like that layout.
Mm-hmm.
And that that's about an acre of property.
What would you do with the site if you abandoned that one and got a new one?
Um, I was thinking, maybe we would just keep it as county property, and and the Emergency Operations Center could possibly expand over there if they need an extra extra parking or something like that.
Sure.
Probably get rid of the retaining walls and things, just so it's not a potential safety hazard or nuisance.
Yeah. I don't get near the complaints on the grit or Level Run as I do the the Motley site.
Yes, sir.
And I know, you know, folks leave there, and they'll go to a barrel's way up the rest side.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir. And you can see that the Motley site, go back to that, you can see the Motley site is, you know, top, top 10 for for amount of trash that comes in there.
Yes.
A lot of those, a lot of the sites that, you know, you see that our three new sites at the bottom there are really at our lowest, lowest users.
Right.
I think at some point in time, maybe more folks will start using the Meadow Ridge site once they become familiar with it and its location around Gretna. But some of our older sites are the ones that really have a lot of traffic and and get a lot more more usage.
Mr. Mr. Acock, Mr. Tucker has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Acock, thank you so much for bringing us up to speed. I get quite a few calls on the Java, Java site down there, I guess, next to the Banister Bridge. And what, what, if anything, I guess, can be done? That's kind of, kind of a hazard in terms of its location, especially with the one lane of the bridge being shut down, and then it, you know, I I've been down there, and it looks kind of haggard.
Yes, sir, that's one site. Another one of the sites that we're looking at for, you know, you know, our goal is, over time, to get rid of all of our green box or the front-load box sites, which is Java sites are a front-load box site, and to make it into one of the more modern convenience sites. So that one, once we get these other two straightened out, which were kind of at the top of the priority list, I think Java is probably the next one in line that we'll look at for an improvement. So we'll look at some, you know, try to acquire some property close to that area.
Got you.
And build a new, build a brand-new site.
Okay. What, and and I'm not trying to pin you down, what kind of timeframe in your mind are you thinking, just a guesstimation?
Well, it's all about funding, so I'm probably looking at next, next budget year, 24, 25, 26.
Okay.
But we can certainly, you know, look at, look at putting in some budget money for a Java site at that time.
Okay. I have another question, and forgive me, I digress. Back to the Robin Court Waterline, real quickly. Tell me again what the holdup is. You were talking about some type of permit or some?
It was an, so when we get grant money that is, lots of times, the grant money that the that the state is using is federal money. And I believe this this was bill, the 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 infrastructure law, I can't think of the the name of the the first term there, but it's basically ARPA money or or Build Back Ameri money that was that was put into effect and back in, you know, several years ago as part of the the coronavirus and also part of this just economic.
Inflation Reduction Act.
Yes, or or just something to to get the economy going back on on track. So it's federal money, and it has some federal obligations. So they looked at the at the project and decided that after it had already been designed, it had already been through the first stages of approval, that we had to do an environmental assessment. So basically, what that looks at is any kind of stream crossings or anything that we may impact on that architectural, historic architectural structures, anything that the project may impact, has to go through an environmental assessment. So that has to go back to the engineer, they have to study it, then they have to submit it back to the the state, and the state has to review it. So it's, you can see how it takes, you know, several, several months to get that done. And I hope we're on the very tail end of that right now, because we've already provided them the the last bit of their last questions from the review of the of that assessment. So we're hoping that we'll get approval very soon.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
I got something.
Yeah, Mr. Whittle?
Yeah, out there at the Java site, Java thought, putting a light up there, people would probably hit them trash cans a lot better if they had a little light at night.
Which site is that?
That is the Java.
At the Java site?
Yeah.
I'll take a look at that. I'm not, I wasn't aware that there was a lie in there.
I was out there the other night, and hell, I couldn't get out of the wake with it.
Good life!
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Man got away with words, don't he? I'll tell you right now. Got to love him.
So another part of solid waste I wanted to discuss or make you make you aware of is we recently completed the new cell construction in August. This is our cell C2, which gives us additional disposal space there at the landfill. That's the bottom of the of the cell, the drainage layer that will soon be covered with with new trash. And we are just waiting on a DEQ now to give us approval to use it. We've, we have to do a QA QC, Quality Control, Quality Assurance Plan, and then we have to submit it to them for approval, and they have to approve it before we can use it. So that's another one, Mr. Tucker, that that they always hold us up on. So.
Okay.
This, for just general information purposes, this is our current phase of operations. The the area to the left or to the west there bounded by white is our current Phase Two. And we are still in part of Cell B and Cell C, which is to the very south. We have submitted a application to start working on Phase Three, which is to the to the east there, to the right, that's bounded by the blue line. And you can see, it's just, you know, that, we we stayed in Phase Two for about 20 years. So you can see the amount of 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 area that we've got available. And then if you look at, if you look at the overall, these, the area in black there to the north, those are Phase Two and Three. The area in green is our entire property that's owned by the county that is, you know, designated as the landfill property. So you can see that we still have quite a bit of land available, and that land is, of course, going to have to be constructed, the cells are going to have to be constructed, and that takes money to do it. But we do have quite a bit of land available if you compare to to the size of the parcel versus the size of the phases that we're currently in and that we're proposing to Historic building improvements several months ago, a few folks from the County Historical Society came with some concerns about the Callens Building, the courthouse and the clerk's office repairs. I wanted to show that we had, we have completed the roof repair there. We took us a while to find the shingles that that were authentic to the project, and they had to come from Canada, and they got held up in in at the at the border. In the process, we did repair some beams and columns there on that front porch. We also re-roofed the the clerk's office there, and you can see that's new. And then this is a porch off the side of the the courthouse that also got re-roofed. And we are currently talking to some contractors and painters about doing some other woodwork requirements. Some of the trim work around the windows needs to be rebuilt, and some of the painting needs to be, some of the trim and woodwork needs to be painted. So we're we're slowly working on that. It just, it sometimes it takes a while to find a contractor that's capable and and available, and that's kind of what's been held up, as a lot of our projects are, they get held up by different, if it's not the government, it's it's finding someone to do it. The Moses Building HVAC improvements, you guys remember that we went into contract with Amerisco several months ago to do this project. And this project is a is a design-build project, so instead of just having the design already done, and we put it out for bids, and we get bids from contractors, we award the project and it starts construction right away. Once we signed the contract with Amerisco, then we began the design process on that. So that is is taking a lot of time. It's been a very, as you know, that building is is very old, and it's got some unique structure to it. So we had to kind of be very, very unique in in our design methods of how we're going to serve it. So the equipment submittals have been received and are being reviewed now. We got those last week. The drawings are being reviewed by the general contractor, and construction is expected to start. I was hoping for a date for you before I finish this slide, but I'm looking for an update next, in the next several days from the GC. But I think we're looking at construction to start within the next probably two months or so. And we're also working on some of the, we're pushing ahead some of the interior improvements that we had allocation from the general contractor for giving us some funding in that contract to do the interior repairs. There's quite a bit of plaster deterioration, some woodwork deterioration that's a result of the the humidity issues that are inside that building. So we've been, we were going to do that after the fact, but the sheriff has has requested us to move that up, and we we are working with the contractor now to get some pricing to see what we can do with that that allocation that's in the contract.
Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Chris, are there any staff going to be displaced in the Moses Building with other constructions going on?
They are telling us no, that they'll be able to work around the staff. It may not be the best conditions, noise-wise and things like that. We don't expect a lot of dust and debris, but but some noise with drilling for for pipe chases and wiring and things. But we're working closely with the sheriff. He's involved in all of our, in all of our planning meetings and all of our, he'll be involved in all of our construction progress meetings. So we do have to relocate. I think it would be a short duration, and and hopefully he's got space where he can move them temporarily. If not, I think we can come up with some some areas that they can go to for, hopefully would be more, no more than a week or two.
How long do you anticipate this to take?
The construction to take?
Yeah.
He, I didn't have that in front of me today yet either. The the contractor's working on that, and I hate to even put a guess out there, because I don't want to be that that far off.
Okay, that's fine. Let us know.
Okay.
When you get that.
Certainly, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Acock, let's go back to the landfill. And I guess my question is, since we've opened a new cell there, are we, excuse me, are we actively looking for other individuals to counties or municipalities to bring us some trash and give us some additional revenue streams?
Yes, sir. We are always actively looking looking for that. It's a balancing act that we have to always be aware of, though, because we don't want to bring it in too fast and then out and outrun our construction of our new cells. So, you know, we still currently have three contracts that are in the works, and we understand that some of the localities to the north of us are doing some some investigations, some RFPs right now, to determine whether they want to try to expand their landfill, or whether they want to bring in, try to to contract with a hauler and bring it into another location. So we're in the, we're talking to them about that. You know, that's the same situation. That's what I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't get into that situation that they're in now, is their landfill is running out of space, and so now they're trying to figure out where they're going to take it. You know, I just want to make sure that we we balance what's coming in with our timeline or building, because that timeline keeps getting extended by DEQ. Right now, that Phase Three that we have submitted our Part B application for, it's about a year-long review process once you submit it. So I just want to make sure, you know, once it's submitted, then we have to to do a final design on it, and then we have to bid it, then we have to construct it. So you take that one year, and then you add probably another six months for design and bidding, and then another 12 months or eight months for construction. And you say you really have to look ahead and make sure that we got a good balance on that. But yes, sir, we are always looking for additional revenue that we can.
Yes, sir. Let me ask a follow-up question, and, you know, because, you know, based on your rate of travel right now, looking ahead and trying to balance everything, what is the capacity right now, just a guesstimation of of where we're at?
So the new cell gives us about a three-year timeline, I think, from the last, the last, we have, we have it flown by a by a drone every quarter, and that drone is able to take pictures to determine the volume that we've got and the volume that was used. and the volume that was used. Then we compare that to the intake rate, and we get a compaction rate. Based on the, our current intake and our, and estimated compaction rate, we got about three years in that cell, which, if you can see, that cell is, is just the lower quarter of that Phase 2. So kind of in the middle there, that little, so you can see, if you compare that to Phase 3, that we've probably got, one, two, three, four, five, six of those in that Phase 3. So maybe, you know, that's probably another 20, 25 years, once we open that phase. And then you look at the, the extra, you know, the extra landfill area that we have. So, you know, we've always said 75 years in this current property. I hope as we, as technology advances, we do a better job of, of taking out recyclables or reusing things, that that will increase over time, because we'll, we'll be able to do, do things with reused things that we're currently burying.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any further questions from Mr. Akka?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good presentation. Thank you. All right, we moving on to Item 6B, potential Pennsylvania County Code Revision and Discussion. Ms. Ragsdale?
Welcome.
Good evening. We have two potential revisions to the Pennsylvania County Code that we would like to discuss with you tonight. I'm not going to present. I'm going to introduce it and then turn it over to our experts so that they can present to you. The first, which PowerPoint do you? See which PowerPoint they load first, so I'll tell you which one is coming up first. You want to do fire first?
Fire ranges first on the list.
We can cover that first, if you all would like.
Either way is fine.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we can go with this one, since you already got it up. This one's fine. So, in conversations we've had with public safety, a lot of times when people get demolition permits, we instruct them that they cannot burn any of the construction debris, that it has to be taken to a landfill. We run into a lot of situations where they do, in fact, burn that debris. And state code has a lot of regulations that relate to that and prohibit the burning of a lot of materials, including construction debris for environmental reasons. But we don't have anything locally that prevents that from occurring. So in conversations with the fire marshal, we have talked about that, and then some other code changes that they would like to see made as far as it relates to fire regulations. So I will turn it over to Scott Hutcherson and let, let him give you an update now.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hutcherson. Doing good, sir?
Hello, sir. Thank you for giving me a moment. But we're just going to discuss a couple of things we'd like to see added to the county ordinances. So we run into this stuff right often, and it, and it feels like it's time for us to address them. There we go. We're going to get it. Technology gets me sometimes, so. But the first thing is motor vehicles in traffic, and this is more or less a parking in certain locations penalty. No person shall park a vehicle or permitted to stand, whether attended or unattended, on a highway in front of a private driveway or within 15 feet of a fire hydrant or on the entrance to a fire station, within 15 feet of the entrance to a plainly designated emergency medical services agency, or within 20 feet from the intersection of curb lines, or if none, then 15 feet from the intersection of property lines at any highway intersection. But mainly what this is addressing is people parking in front of a fire hydrant or too close to a fire hydrant. We see that sometimes. You see it a whole lot of times in the media, we know, where you'll see the, the five-inch hoes run through the car, they're running through the windows to the hydrant because you parked in front of it. So we trying to prevent that. And as with most of this stuff, we don't, we're not going out looking to write summonses or fines. Most time at first occurrence with any of this stuff right here, we use it as, as an educational thing. We talk to them about what's, what the law says and how it should be done. And same thing with the, with the next thing we're going to discuss. And this is solid waste disposal. This comes from the Code of Virginia's administrative code, open burning prohibitions. And this is talking about things you can't openly burn. It says, "No owner or other person shall cause or permit open burning or the use of a special incinerator device for the destruction of rubber tires, asphaltic materials, crankcase oil, impregnated wood, or other rubber or petroleum-based materials, except when conducting bona fide firefighter instruction at firefighting training schools having permanent facilities." This falls, like I say, this falls under the disposal, you know, solid waste. We have people that occasionally have an old single-wide mobile home, and they'll just burn it down. And we can't do that anymore. And, and again, same thing. I had a guy call last week, wanted to burn an old house. I asked him, I said, you know, I started explaining the process to him and why we couldn't do it. He didn't understand at first, but we finally got it, got it figured out. But, you know, same thing here. We, we're not looking to, to write them tickets, but we do need a little sum in case they persistent. Sometimes you'll, you'll go out and discuss it well, and then 23 days later, you're back down there discussing it again because they, they want to get it going, you know, so that's what we run into. The statewide fire prevention code, again, the location for open burning shall not be less than 50 foot from any structure, and provisions shall be made to prevent the fire from spreading to within 50 foot of any structure. The exceptions to this, of course, is fires in approved containers that are not less than 15 foot from a structure. And the second is the minimum required distance from a structure shall be 25 feet when the pile size is less than 2 foot, or less than down to by 2 foot. In other words, about a wheelbarrow, load of sticks and leaves. That's just a small, that's what they're talking about right there. But that still has to be 25 foot away. Bonfires, a bonfire shall not be conducted within 50 foot of a structure or combustible material unless the fire is in contained in a barbecue pit. Conditions that could cause a fire to spread within 50 foot of a structure shall be eliminated prior to ignition. This is just protecting us from people setting, you know, vinyl siding on houses. People burn too close to the house, and next thing you know, the vinyl siding goes up, and that's just like gas. Once it goes up beside the house, it's in the attic. So this is more or less looking out for their own safety and their own well-being. Sometimes they don't, they don't view it that way. But all of this stuff is, is things that's in state code but not county code. So we just wanted to, to get us a county code to, to match the state code so we could maybe enforce it a little better if we had to. It comes up right often, the illegal dumping, you know, we go to where people throw out used tires a lot. And we try to figure out who's doing that. Construction, old construction materials and things like that you'll see piled up on the side of the road. We, we try to concentrate on that stuff, too, so. Is it any questions about what we discussed?
Any questions, gentlemen? Mr. Bowman?
What is an approved, what is your, is your approved burning barrel, or what are you talking about?
You know, like you see these, these fancy bonfire pits and lows and things like that where it has a lid on them. Just to keep the embers and the brands from flying out into the, to the, you know, neighboring brush and stuff like that.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Scott, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The codes that you quoted up here, we don't have those in our current ordinance?
They are not in the current county codes, no, sir. They are state codes. Some of it is in county code. I think like parking in a fire lane is a county code.
Right.
Parking in a handicap, which that's not really the fire marshal's responsibility, but if we see that, we can enforce it.
Right.
That's a county code. Improper disposal of solid waste is, is a county code, but the illegal burning part wasn't. That is, that's a state administrative code, and we just wanted to get in with, get it in with the rest of it.
So those are really just minor changes to our current ordinance?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Right. I don't see a problem with that.
No, not no big, big deal, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
It's just the fact of doing it, getting it handled. Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Ingle?
Scott, thank you. If there's an existing state code which carries the penalties, what's the benefit to having a county code running in correlation with that?
From what I understand, the benefit of having it as a county code, let's say we have to find somebody for burning an old house. And let's say the fine's $100. If we run it through a county code, that money, that $100 comes to the county. Where if we run it through the state code, it goes to the state.
I was hoping you'd say that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Oh, Mr.?
One more question?
Mr. Chairman, one more question, and it was the burning of the house. So can an individual homeowner contact the fire department and say, hey, I want to burn this structure down? Do you want to use it for training firefighters? Can you do that, or?
We used, two years ago, we done it a lot, but the EPA and the DEQ has gotten so tight on the restrictions. If you burn a house now, or any house, chances are you've got lead-based paint, you've got asbestos side, or you have shingles on it, and all of that stuff is prohibited. To, to burn a house for training nowadays, it most, pretty much has to be stripped. And somebody inspects it, they boil it up in windows, it's a lot of work and expense into burning an old house for training anymore. That used to be a great asset, but
Right.
once everybody realized the, the ill effects of it, that changed it.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Speaking of training, I, I've had this question come up, and I didn't have an answer, but some of the departments have these contacts boxes or something like that.
Shipping containers.
And they want to use it for training, but there are stipulations and problems that inhibit them from doing that. Explain that one to me, because, again, these are volunteers spending their time and money and being willing to go through training, and we're saying you can't do it. So tell me about that.
I don't really govern that part of it, but I feel like it's probably a fact of insurance coverage in case somebody gets hurt that may have a hand in it. And then probably also, you, I feel sure you'd have to have a building permit. If you, you know, if you put stairs on them, say you wanted a second story of them, you would have to have stairway up, and probably would have to have engineer drawings and stuff for that. I feel sure it can be done. It's just a little more to it than just simply setting one out there and, and doing it.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure the, all the specifics, but I sure would like to see that, that done. And within reason, ease up on, on how we can work with them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingle. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hutcherson, thank you so much for your insight. Give me the two issues, I believe it was. One was the burning. What's the other one that we're not running concurrently with the state?
Pretty much it's the burning too close to a structure. That's a state fire code. And then the illegal burning, which is a state fire code. And again, you burning materials like tires, asphalt, shingles, things that shouldn't be burning. Most time you can tell it's a sure sign when you see black smoke. When you see a column of black smoke, that's a sure sign that some, unless the fire department's been called, something's going on that shouldn't be there.
Okay. You know, my colleagues, I think if I'm in order, I'll, I'll make a motion. We add this to our agenda tonight so we can act on it.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Yes, sir, Mr. Ingle?
Scott, what, what I wanted to ask, and I've been out of the police business 14 years. A lot has changed. But I was thinking back in time, there were some county codes when I was working that we worked to incorporate that to be a state code. I forget how it worked. That's, that's a legal question.
Yes, sir.
But, but in my, my view, if we could incorporate all the county codes to mirror the state code, and part of that provision would be that all, you know, fines and penalties would stay in, in the locality, that's worth looking into.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think it's, that's the thing to do. If we can mirror the state codes, then we can't go wrong.
And do, you know, do all of them. There is a state code, I'm sure there is, but mirror every one of them.
Yeah, that's the easiest, that's the easiest way to do it.
Work on that.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I don't.
Emily had asked me something about, did you want a red line version?
We haven't, we haven't advertised any of these. We just wanted to bring this all before you and kind of, you know, make sure that this was something that you all wanted us to move forward with. So if you would like, staff can work on a red line version and bring that back to you at your November meeting to be adopted.
Okay.
That's when we'll make a motion, correct?
Find out about the fines and stuff like that, too, because if we're going to do the work and somebody else won't get the money, just let them do it. I mean, it's no need us, I mean, we regulate enough stuff. We're going to soon regulate this stuff out of business, so if it's something we can benefit from, I'm all for it.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So bring us something back, and we'll, we'll go from there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate it.
We're good. Thank you.
So Jason Inman, the county's code official, is going to talk to you all about gun ranges. This is something that staff has been getting a lot of calls about recently. I'm not sure why now, but we have. And currently, the zoning ordinance, ordinance regulates where these can go as far as the zoning district, and it requires a special use permit. But we don't have any standards that they have to be built to. So we have started looking at other localities, and a lot of other localities have regulations that they bake into their county code as far as the construction of these commercial gun ranges. This would not be private residences wanting to shoot on their property. This would be strictly commercial for-profit gun ranges. So Jason's going to walk you through kind of some of the things that we found.
Welcome, Mr. Ingle.
All right. Supportive goal with this potential ordinance is, like Ms. Ragsdale said, to have some kind of regulations for how this thing is constructed. To have a clearly stated guidelines for the location of where this potential shooting range could go, its development, its approvals, construction, and its operation. Also to ensure safety for the residents, the business owners, agricultural, the farms around it, livestock, wildlife, the soil, vegetation, and any source of water around the area. All right. So part of the purpose of what we're looking at this for is so that, like I said, we can have a clear and common view of what, what this is going to be, what this shooting range is going to be used for. To determine what use, which zoning group, how, how is this going to work with the other zoning around it, and to conform to any state laws, any, any regulations. And mainly to have an overall consistency with the zoning ordinance and the parts of the building code that does cover this. Things that we do have to consider, as Ms. Ragsdale said, as part is, is location, type of businesses, not only the business itself, because if it's just a shooting range or if it's anything other than a shooting range. Our businesses actually around this, this area. Safety, safety for everyone that's on the site that is shooting, and safety for anyone that's residing around the area. And the noise standards. Also, part of the shooting range is lead management. So the EPA regulates this. Some shooting range comparisons. One of them that I've really looked at is Halifax County. They're the closest one to us that has one that's already, already there. Another part of this, too, is as we get, keep getting calls for these, to help regulate this, help, help guide the growth of it. And again, another, another part of this is to protect the social and economic well-being of private and public property. And again, having, having this clear path wrote into it could also encourage economic development. All right, so the Virginia Construction Code does not have any regulations on the specific, specific construction of a shooting range. Construction and operation will require jurisdiction to regulate through an ordinance. Now, the Virginia Construction Code does plan to affect some aspects of this. But the National Rifle Association has a book, it's called the Range Source Book, that gives specific, specifics for the design and construction of a shooting range. Again, the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, offers best management practices for any lead cleanup and removal. So we'll talk a little bit about the Range Source Book. This book is designed to provide range developers and operators with guidance to assist in the planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the shooting range facility. It contains the essential concepts of safe range design along with methods, equipment, technology for efficient and cost-effective range construction. Guidance is provided to assist in the range development. and cost-effective range construction. Guidance is provided to assist in the range development process from initial concept to final construction and operation of this facility. All right, so the EPA and their best management practices. So lead at some shooting ranges can be a significant environmental concern, depending on its location, if there's a water source nearby. EPA's purpose in developing this manual is to assist range owners and operators to operate in an environmentally protective manner. The manual covers the environmental concerns, laws, and regulations, and best management practices. All right, so just some considerations we can think about. So the noise of a jet engine is equal to 140 decibels. Well, 9 millimeter is 159 decibels, so actually quite a bit louder. So as we're going through this, noise obviously would be an issue that we'd have to look at. So the bullets themselves, any kind of lead contaminants, so environmental, water, soil, contamination. I see, so lead is not water soluble, so it can pollute water if it comes into contact, direct contact, or through rain runoff. This runoff and this lead contamination can be harmful to wildlife, whether through direct exposure or indirect from contaminated grass or water. Other considerations that we have to look at when a range is going in is where is it going? Things we have to think about is parks around that area. What about the water, what sources of water we have, groundwater, surface water, rivers and streams, the agricultural soil, what's being planted, crops. And again, this comes back to the lead contamination. Residential areas, what's around this, who's living around these areas? Businesses, again, traditional farming, you've got to think about livestock, equestrians, horses.
Any questions for Mr. Inman? Ms. Dingle?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jason. A couple of questions. If somebody has an existing application to build a range, would they be grandfathered in, or do you know?
If somebody's existing, yes, sir, they're grandfathered in. This would only affect new construction.
And would this include indoors, well, does outdoor?
This would include indoors, outdoor.
One more question. Would this affect the county's range next to the landfill?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's, that's existing, so this is only for new construction.
I never have understood the placement where you're shooting directly at the landfill, but maybe I do.
Yes, sir. Yep. In the National, the Range Source Book, which I have right here, it clearly defines between outdoor and indoor shooting ranges.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dingle. Thank you, Ms. Dingle. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Jason. So help me here again, I may have lost this in the first part. Why are we looking at this again?
So for any commercial, any kind of range that's coming in for commercial, there's safety factors that we have to take a look at.
Okay.
Noise, which way the guns are being pointed, which way the bullets are going.
Okay.
For safety concerns. And we've had, we have had people come in asking questions. We have no guidance or clear path forward on how this is going to be regulated. Now, the building code gives us some stuff, but not a whole lot. It's not going to cover noise, directions of bullets, lead contamination, any of that kind of stuff.
Okay. So my understanding is that we have people now inquiring about purchasing property that they want to put a range on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, it's, yeah, they're calling in just asking general questions.
Okay.
I would rather say.
Okay. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve here.
Yes, sir.
I got you. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. All right, so I'm familiar with some of these ranges here, and a couple of the things that are pointed out by the residents when you put a range in place is how close it is to their property.
Correct.
The limits on when they're firing, whether it's on Saturday night, Sunday morning, or whatever, and the zoning that's adjacent to that particular property.
Yes, sir.
So is that covered in our comprehensive plan anywhere? Is that covered in our planning ordinance? Anything like that? This is a very unique piece.
Comes your answer.
So no. We regulate gun ranges currently by special use permit, so what we normally try to do is during the special use permit process, we put conditions on that special use permit to cover a wide variety of these issues. But it still doesn't cover how they're constructed. So we are trying to not have a lot of gray area and have a clear path forward for people and say, this is your guidance. So if you want to construct a range, here is the NRA Source Book, this is what we follow for range construction. And then we would still have the ability to look at the specific property and say, well, you're a lot closer to neighboring properties than, you know, this range was over here, this gun club was over here, so you need to put up either some more protection, or we need to look at, you know, noise reduction, et cetera, so that we're not negatively impacting your neighbors. So we still have that kind of second layer with the special use permit, but we would like some standardization, just so everyone knows, you have a gun range, this is what you're going to have to do. And there's no, well, this person was made to do this, this person was made to do this. We want to make sure that we're treating everyone the same. I will say that I have talked to a local gun club that has an existing gun range in the northern part of the county. I discussed this with them. They are very willing to, whatever regulations we come up with before it's adopted, they would like to sit down with us, with staff, to go through them. So we are gonna, you know, we're gonna try to do that, and we would welcome other gun ranges, because I know there are a couple other, you know, shooting clubs and stuff in the area, and we would welcome the opportunity to sit down with them as well, because we don't want to over-regulate, we just want to make sure that we're protecting the residents around the gun range, and that we have, we're looking at the right safety measures, and it's being constructed in a way that is safe and manageable, and, you know, everyone knows, you're going to build a gun range in Pennsylvania County, these are the steps that you need to follow.
Good, good. And I commend you for getting out ahead of this, because it is very unique in its own character, but it will impact neighbors, and I don't care if they're a mile away. I mean, they're going to talk about it. So kudos for getting out ahead of this. I'd like to be part of that when you start that discussion, and also getting those folks that already have these firing ranges in place, they've gone through, you know, the growing pains with it. So having those folks come in and tell you firsthand what they are experiencing, what they had to go through, is a great idea for putting this together. So, thank you.
And we also want to know what regulations would negatively impact them, you know, past just safety, because we're not trying to negatively impact a business, we're not trying to over-regulate a business. We just want to make sure that we're covering all safety concerns and issues. So I have had conversations with them, they welcomed the idea of sitting down with us and going through the ordinance before it's adopted, so we're going to take them up on that.
Good, good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Not? Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving to item 6C. We have a tornado response debriefing. Mr. Key.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. Just wanted to give you all a little debriefing about what all went on on the 27th and everything that's happened since then. So Friday, September 27th, about 2:49 PM, we had a report of a tornado that had touched down in the Dry Fork area. This was from the remnants of Hurricane Helene. Immediately, we had first responders on the scene that was reporting that the tornado did definitely touch down. This went for about six miles, touching down in the Dry Fork area, extending up through the Callens area. First responders arrived on scene, they encountered numerous problems with trees down, power lines down, and access in the scenes. We actually had two different scenes, one on WI Powell and Dry Fork Road, and the other one on Irish Road. Members from Dry Fork, Blair's, Callens, Chatham, Sheriff's Department, and Public Safety all responded. Once they got on scene, like I said, they encountered all of these situations, plus there was a report of one injury. So access with scenes was very limited. We had to get the power lines, the power company had to shut down power to the area. They had numerous spot fires along the sides of the road, so they was able to extinguish them and gain access to the area to where the trapped person was at. Was one reported injury, she was treated, packaged, and transported to the hospital, and later transferred to Roanoke Hospital. Numerous spot fires were able to be extinguished quickly, once we was able to get the electric shut down. Had to shut down the whole area just to contain everything, to make it safe for the firefighters to access the area. Once we was able to do that, we was able to get some RTVs and ATVs into the area and go door-to-door checking for accountability and any other injuries. After that, we was able to send additional teams to do secondary searches, was able to mark houses, and shut off the propane tanks. We did move one family from the area to the Dry Fork Fire Department to meet with Red Cross later that evening. We kept the area shut down overnight, so VDOT and utility crews could work on the cleanup. The roads were open within a couple hours, and power was restored to the area within 12 hours. So this was all pretty chaotic initially, but it was quickly resolved and brought to calm. All right, on Saturday, September 28th, we opened up the landfill, began the debris removal process, and we, as we had many crews in the area working to clean up, we had numerous houses that had trees on them, they had cars, had trees on them, all the debris on the sides of the road. Also had VDM come down to do assist with the house-to-house crisis track for damage assessments. We reviewed about 30 properties and found damage to right at 20 houses. Also had the National Weather Service come down, they did the search of the area to confirm the rotation of the winds and the distance traveled of the tornado. Traveled just over six miles, and it was categorized as an F2 tornado. On Sunday, September 29th, Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears came down to visit the area. She stopped at the Dry Fork Fire Department and talked to quite a few of the board members, and then she went on a small tour of the area to see how much damage, and also to talk with the people in the area. On October 1st, President Biden declared a major disaster in Virginia as a result of the Hurricane Helene, which included public assistance, and Pennsylvania was, Pennsylvania County was a part of this. In the public assistance, this allowed for local and state governments to restore public infrastructure. So if any public buildings were damaged, schools were damaged, school buses, anything along those lines, we could apply for assistance for that. Thankfully, there was none, so we are thankful for that. Also, the public assistance will help with the cost of debris removal and any life-saving emergency protective measures. Also, on October 1st, we had VDM and FEMA come in to do door-to-door damage assessments. They wanted to get out and get in and talk to the people to check basically if they had insurance, if it was underinsured, or needed assistance. By doing this, we've now been approved for individual assistance, and this is benefits for the survivors directly to assist those who are uninsured or underinsured for necessary expenses and serious needs. This is also included for the renters of properties. All right, on, let's see, Tuesday, September 24th, public safety increased, we went to an increased readiness level state, where we opened up our virtual EOC, so we were preparing for the storms as they happened. Any questions, gentlemen?
Any questions for Mr. Key?
FEMA did come down again today, FEMA and VDM. I've got the two ways of being able to apply for assistance over the next few days. I'm gonna go back into the communities on WI Powell, Dry Fork Road, and Irish Road, and go door-to-door to be able to show them the two ways they've got of applying, either by phone or by computer. And I've also got the steps for doing that, that I'm gonna take to each individual house in the next few days.
Good. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment. Thank you very much, Chris, for this, I mean, it was outstanding job. I was there a couple hours after the tornado went through. You did a great job. You were sweating like a mule, running up and down. I don't know how you kept it all straight, but to all the agencies, and I've got some comments during my comments that I'm going to make later on, but great job there. And with FEMA, and you answered actually a question that I was going to ask for the public about the FEMA support there, and you are going to go door-to-door and let those folks know that they are eligible for some FEMA support there. So good job by everybody that was involved in that, to include Danville Power, even though I know most of our local agencies, but Danville Power was right out there, on time, clearing those telephone, those power lines, and restoring power out there. So a great job by everybody.
Yeah, VDOT was a great help.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Like VDOT and Danville Electric, Mecklenburg was also out there. We had crews in two different locations operating, no injuries to any firefighters or EMS personnel. You hate seeing things like this happen, but I think it was a great start, a great setup, and it was run very efficiently.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stone, thank you. Ms. Key, thank you for your report, and I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Bowman. Really appreciate your response and the rapid response of all of the agencies and all those people involved that were out there in the middle of the storm, you know, doing their level best to reduce the heartache and the problems out there for our residents, but also to save lives. That being said, now, there, you know, you mentioned that you have the information from FEMA to get to them in the next couple of days. Is there a way you can expedite that? Because, you know, as we watch the news, it doesn't matter what channel you're watching, there's a lot of misinformation out there about FEMA being out of money, about FEMA not really responding, that sort of thing. So I think we should get that information to them post-haze.
Yes, I actually got with Diana earlier and sent her the information, so we can put that on the website also, on their name.
Okay, thank you so much.
See, we've already got it on there.
Good.
Went from this afternoon at 1:30 when they left, we've already got it up and on there, and we've got flyers printed and ready to go to the area tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you.
You, too, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. McFarley. Thank you, Mr. Keys. Briefing. Any more questions? No? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we're moving on to 6D, Ringo Rail Trail Repair Discussion. Mr. Arnold? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. So as you all may recall, this past July, on the consent agenda, the board approved an agreement with VDM to increase this project's budget by approximately $2.1 million. So we submitted a budget amendment request back in July of 2023, based upon a previous bid that we had, bid cycle that we had gone through to repair the bridge. And we noticed that the money that we had available to cover that bridge repair was way short of the lowest bid. So hence why we submitted this budget amendment request to FEMA. Well, it took almost a year to hear back from them. There was a lot of activity going on in the meantime, one of which a historical study was done to record information about the bridge, because it was once part of the Danville, or Richmond-Danville rail system. And so finally, we heard, we got additional money to the tune of $2.1 million. We're like, excited. This is great. We should be much closer to being able to get what we need when we put this project back out for bid, so that we did. Later on, in July, we put the Ringold Rail Trail Pedestrian Bridge back out for bid, and on the 18th of September, we opened those bids, and we received two. And the lowest was $3,972,218 submitted to us from Haynes Brothers Incorporated. But here's the kicker. If you look at the recently increased project budget, which totals, for easy numbers, 3.1 million, and then you look at the lowest bid, which is almost $4 million, or 3.972 million, we've got a delta there of about $800,000 for simplicity's sake. And really, if you look in the, that table, and I know it may be hard for some of you all to see, but in the lower right-hand corner of the slide, really provides a more granular breakdown. So in addition to having the money to cover the lowest bid to repair the bridge, we also foresee the need for some additional money to cover consulting or professional services, one of which to inspect the bridge, do geotechnical... services, one of which to inspect the bridge, um, do geotechnical inspections and construction inspections at various phases of the, um, bridge's repair, uh, other work from our, uh, consultants, our engineering firm, Dewberry, on this project. So we estimate that costing about $250,000. So, when you take all this into consideration, as well as about $66,000 or $67,000 in unreimbursed expenses, expenses we have yet to draw down from FEMA, we foresee as things currently stand right now, that we might be, you know, needing an additional $1.1 million. Now, this has been brought to FEMA's attention. We always have been a bit behind in terms of having the amount of money needed to fully restore the Ringgold Rail Trail to, to its condition prior to Tropical Storm, uh, Michael in 2018. We are getting closer, but as you can see from the numbers I've just rattled off and what we have up here on the screen, uh, we're, we're, there's still a gap there. Uh, and so, we reached out to FEMA, well, you know, we want to go ahead and move forward with this, uh, and what do they advise? And per our contact with FEMA, uh, they are very keen, and I have it quoted down there on the, the bottom bullet on the left of that slide, they're very keen on the contract being awarded, uh, because not only do we not have the money we need, the project currently is slated for completion in, at the end of March of 2025. And when you look at the lowest bid, not only do they give you a dollar amount, they also give you an idea of when they expect to complete construction, which is 730 days, or basically two years' time. So, what FEMA is advising us to do is, and things will look a lot better once the contract is in place and awarded and work commences, we would not only request for another budget amendment, but they're encouraging us to request a time extension. But again, they would like to see, because of the amount of time that's passed, and there's all sorts, and the only slide I really have to present to you all is this one right here, because if we want to, we will be here like until 7:30 tonight if we retrace all of our steps back to what has transpired since Tropical Storm Michael in 2018. Uh, there's been delays due to a slew of reasons, uh, but, um, I guess I wanted to give you all a, hopefully a full and clear understanding of where we stand on this. We do hope that this recreational amenity can be restored to its fullest. And I don't have the full linear distance of the Ringgold Rail Trail system right here before me, but I know right now you can walk one side over the other side of it, but you can't cross over where the collapsed pier is, which is what's shown up in that picture. So, um, in any event, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have, and, uh, and then we'll, we'll see where things are after, go through the questions.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Arnold, thank you, sir, uh, for the update. I guess, in my mind, you know, uh, at the request of FEMA, if I'm understanding you correctly, which I think I am, they want us to go ahead and, um, make a commitment to initiate the work and, uh, sign a contract, and then they will make a determination whether or not, after we reapply, they will give us the additional money. And that answer might be no. So we are looking at, the county's spending 1.1 mil, is that what you said? That's, that's the delta once everything, with the administrative fees and all that?
Correct, correct. $1,159,400 is what we estimate right now. If all, no more money was made available by FEMA and VDM and all that, so the eligible amount for the total project was not increased, we would see, um, an additional $1,159,400 that we would be responsible for.
Okay. I just, I, I just wanted to rehearse that back into your ears, my ears, and, and my colleagues' ears, because we're gonna have to try to find the money, so we have to, you know, kind of be cautious in terms of, you know, the steps we are taking. We have a lot of stuff that's going on on the drawing board and, you know, we don't actually have answers to the questions yet.
That's right. That's right. No, I agree. I mean, you not only look at this dollar amount, but you look at it in the, you know, along with everything else that we are always seeing and hearing.
Okay. That's, yeah. Now, that was my question. Thank you, sir.
And I just would like to point out, we just received today an email from our contact with VDM, uh, which is Mr. Key referenced earlier in regards to the response to the, the tornado. FEMA and VDM work, you know, hand in, hand in hand. And so, our VDM contact was saying just today, go ahead and submit for the time extension request and the additional money as soon as possible in their portal. So, I mean, we're getting the encouragement to do that, but they're not gonna guarantee anything for a variety of reasons. But we would intend, if we did go ahead and award this project as soon as feasibly possible, uh, and once we had all the specifics down enough to submit the level of information they need in the, in those portal requests, we would do just that. So, so hopefully we wouldn't be, and we do have money to get started with construction, and I'm assuming the contractor would probably be billing us monthly for the work that they're doing. So hopefully if we submit a request and that request is approved, then that will narrow the amount of time that we might be kind of in that leap of faith stage, as you might say.
Yeah. And you did say 700 and some days?
Yes, sir. Two years. Two years, for the total.
Possibly in two years, they've been.
That's what.
Agreed to pay the rest of the money. I don't know. I don't, I don't know that.
You don't know that you're gonna get the money?
No, I don't. No, you don't. But they want the project finished by 2025. We might be in about a shape to come up with the money, and if we got enough to get it started.
That's right.
I don't know. What'd you think, Mr. Height? It's in your district, sir.
Do, do we have any idea of how many people actually utilize the trail down there now?
I'm gonna tell you off the top of my head, I don't. I'm gonna unfortunately put our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Price, on the spot. I don't know if he has a number either.
I mean, I know it's a number you.
Do you have any idea of the?
We don't, we don't have a check-in and check-out place.
That's right. We don't have any electronics to track that. Yeah, yeah.
I can't give you an accurate number, so don't call it yet, or there is something happening of, like, we get those calls, probably long late, you know, we start thinking, but we, we do get calls, but as far as.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask another question.
Yes, sir.
You know, because, and, and Mr. Height, I know you're going somewhere with your line of question, but, um, I guess I want to ask, are, are we actively, uh, looking in other areas rather than not just only FEMA, but also, uh, what about some grants or, or what about, uh, these, um, Dan River Regional Foundations or, you know, are, are we really beating the bushes looking for the additional money to, you know, to offset what the county would have to be responsible for?
Our focus to date has been on, because it was part of a disaster recovery grant.
Right.
Are, really, we, we have been focusing on what's available through the FEMA and VDM channels.
Okay.
It's not to say that other funding sources could not be explored. Um, you know, the one thing I'll say, it definitely takes time in going through the FEMA and VDM, uh, you know, additional funding request process and things like that. It's, 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 it's a big bureaucracy. But thankfully, and I hope the same would hold true the next go-around, that's why I knock on some wood, I, be at my head, uh, we were, you know, they did award the last request, you know, and they actually came here on-site early this year to lay eyes on the actual damage, so that, I think there's some, you know, I, I, I think we have their support, but there's no, there's no guarantee at this stage of the game.
Let me, let me also ask, and I'm, I'm sorry, but, you know, we have to get creative sometimes.
That's fair.
Uh, we did not get a dime out of the Caesar's deal. Would this be something that we could go and meet with, you know, the powers-to-be at Caesar's? How close is this Dan River Trail to Danville, Virginia? And as, you know, visitors will come to the area, you know, not everyone in Pennsylvania County is just gonna be using this, but, uh, you know, I'm sure they advertise it in Sochi, uh, so much to see in Danville, Pennsylvania County. So my question is, have we or would we, uh, maybe make the trip over to, uh, the casino and talk to those people? Um, I don't know who the board of directors or the president or anything like that, I'd be willing to go and have the conversation, you know, and say, hey, throw us a bone. You, you follow me?
I do follow you.
That's, that would be a suggestion.
Sure. Uh, and I think it certainly, we can look beyond just, you know, the more traditional means of funding this repair, uh, if that's the board's interest, and, and if that means the organization, who already identified and possibly others, that certainly, uh, you know, we, we, we can, we can do our very best to pursue those options. Absolutely.
I did. Mr. Arnold, if we by some chance don't get the timeline extension, um, will we get what's already been approved? Maybe you said it and I missed it.
I have not said it, and I, that's a question that I think.
Could you ask it?
I can ask it, yes. Absolutely, yes. I don't have the answer.
I think if we already approved, that should be a given.
Yeah. I, I, I do want to say that they do continue to really try to egg us along in awarding this, because I guess it shows that the locality is committed, uh, and then they're gonna be more inclined to take any time extensions and funding requests more seriously and everything. We went through this already and we thought, we didn't think it was gonna take a full year to get that previous funding request, um, you know, responded to, you know, so it's, 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 uh, we're always playing catch-up, I guess you might say. But yeah, we can certainly ask that.
Thank you, Mr. Key.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bowman, you have a question?
Sure. I do. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So, uh, Dave, help me here because you went back way before I got here. So that picture you've got up there, is the estimate just to build that stanchion that's removed out of the middle there? Is that to rebuild that? That's, that's it?
That is, that's what it goes toward. Now, let me back up a minute. I don't have, there's more detailed information in the scope of work, uh, that Dewberry Engineers laid out, but the primary focus is to reconstruct that pier right there that you see is missing. But they're going to, uh, there's other work that's gonna be needed in order to just, you're not just gonna be able to go in and put a new pier in, you're gonna have to do other things to make sure it's shored up properly and everything.
I understand.
And that's all laid out in the bid packet, yeah.
I understand. So how, I see Haynes Brothers is the lowest bid, but how long is that bid good for? How long is, are they locked into that price? How much time have we got? I mean, if we drag this thing out another year, are they still at that price?
No, sir. Well, I know it won't be that long. It's generally, I think, 60 to 90 days is what I want to say. And so that was, the bid opening date was 18th of September, so. They gave us a little longer extension, yeah.
So, so has the bid been put, uh, placed before Haynes Brothers came in? Did we get bids earlier? And if so, how much lower than the current Haynes Brothers bid?
The previous bid.
And where I'm headed here is, if this thing prolongs, it continues on, how much more is this gonna increase?
Good question. The previous bid was received in early 2023 and was $3,263,900. And so now you've got a bid, we'll just say 18 months later.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it does, it will, it continues to escalate, yeah.
I understand. Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. We good, gentlemen?
No, sir. I'm not good yet.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Uh, I apologize. Mr. Arnold, how long has staff known about, uh, the award? And, um, and I know we're waiting on the, um, actual bids to be open, but, I mean, right now you're presenting and you're kind of boxing this board in, in terms of a time crunch to make a decision on 1.1 million dollars. So help me to understand that.
Right. So we were notified in late June of the additional, uh, $2.1 million budget increase, and then they had to draft an agreement, uh, which went on the July consent agenda, and then we went and put it back out for bid. We, we had a feeling that we might be short, we just didn't know how short. Um, and then we didn't know exactly how short though until those bids were opened on the 18th of September. And so, and then here we are today, roughly, what, 27 days later or something?
I think this is Mr. Height's district.
I'm trying to think, uh, Justin, how long is the trail, the other side of the bridge going towards Halifax? How much trail is that?
All right, I'm in the mic. Can everybody hear? Everybody good?
Yes, sir.
I know. Um, so, um, the current church roadside, is that the side?
Yeah, yeah, that's the side I'm talking about. How long is that second side over there?
So the trail itself, I know, is 5.5 miles.
Probably four miles or more.
Yeah. Cause the depot side.
I think from the depot to the bridge is roughly, look, what, three and a half?
Yes, I would say so.
Miles, probably.
Yeah, I don't think it's that far.
Yes, sir.
And, but you still have access from the current church side up to the bridge? So basically you just, we've got, we can't join the two.
I mean, I mean, it's that liability risk. I assume we're engineers. I don't know how to explain it all, but where that portion is, I guess, you know, it's, we could still, people still.
I guess they were thinking if I walked on it, it might fall.
I think more so too, is, you know, we used to have people that would drive, you know, we could drive through it to do our maintenance, well now, you know, you should not be driving. So we have a, I don't know what you, call the, um, barriers or whatever. We have one that is in front of that, um, and then we had it chained off, and then, you know, people are still cutting our chains and, and trying to, um, go on it and, and be on that bridge. But I would say probably around about three and a half or so. But I mean, it's still, both sides are still in good condition, so they've been fixed. So the current church roadside, as you may be aware, has been fixed. I mean, it was completely washed out, um, after Hurricane Michael, um, and so that side's been, you know, repaired, and, um, this is, I guess you would call the last phase of the project, from what I have understood when I came into it.
Have you received many call, calls about when this bridge is gonna be repaired?
I have had some. We've had some, some people reach out wanting to know when, you know, it's been since 2018, and I think one thing, you know, as I took it, kind of came into this project in 20, um, and looking back is, you know, how are we, it's been a long time, and COVID was in the middle of that, and, um, to Mr. Bowman's point, it feels like we're going in a cycle, um, where it just keeps increasing. Um, so it's, I don't, it's just, it's been fun.
It's almost like we've got to lock in on a quoted amount within the pay. I mean, in an ideal world. I, I fully get the financial concern slash risk slash the leap of faith that, I don't like it either. Uh, nobody does, you know? Um, I think it's, it is a valued, I would say, a pretty highly valued recreational amenity here in Pennsylvania County, uh, and also historical and cultural, uh, of, of, um, significance there too. So, um, personally, I, I, I feel like that we will not, we would not be responsible, but I'm, I'm going off of, I'm speculating there, that we won't be responsible for that 1.159 million dollars.
Mr. Arnold?
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
If, if we sign that contract, we're gonna be responsible, we'll be on the hook. Um, I propose that maybe.
Um, I propose that maybe, um, between you and, uh, Parks and Rec, that we do a deep dive in terms of looking for additional river, new stream that will supplement that one point, one million dollars. I'm, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, um, I, I think we can, um, beat the bushes a little bit for some dollars. You mentioned historical value, you know, have we reached out for historical grants, that sort of thing? So, uh, let's give you thirty days to work on that. Bring that back to us in thirty days. And, uh, and then maybe we can make a little bit more of an informed decision. But you're asking me to spend the taxpayers' money without everybody really doing their homework and everybody doing their due diligence. And, and I apologize for having to say that, but that's kind of where I am and where I feel, what I feel right now.
In it, being in my district, uh, I agree with Mr. Tucker. We do need to explore if there are any other options out there other than FEMA or VDM. Uh, and that would give it, you know, come back next month, because I know we got a deadline to sign the contract.
That's right.
But thirty days, we would at least maybe know if another entity is interested in making some contributions.
That's correct.
Yeah, here comes the money bag.
One thing I just want to point out is you want to make sure FEMA pays what FEMA's going to pay. And that's where you get into a chicken and egg situation. You can't hold up progress for waiting on FEMA. Now, I agree, we can reach out to the casino and different people, but you can't, you can't really say what you need because you don't know what you need. I mean, maybe we find out what the interest is. Um, that's where we've been in a quandary as staff. It's not that we haven't wanted to look at those things, but you shouldn't look at those things if you think FEMA, who is the responsible party here, paid what they are supposed to. And that is seventy-five percent of this project. Nineteen percent comes from the state, seventy-five percent comes from the federal government, and we're on the hook for six percent. We have budgeted that six percent. Um, it is there. Um, but I will say, you know, we're not only short here, we're short in some of the other areas that they provided funding for. So we can certainly go to those entities, um, to see if there would be interest if we, we can get enough money. But you see where we are, we don't even know what we're asking for. And FEMA even came back today, which was very promising to me when I read the email. Make sure you ask for an extension. Make sure you ask for the additional funding. And we did request funding to the tune of more, more than this, because we used the estimates that were given to us, but we were not awarded that amount. So I don't know if that's some kind of process FEMA goes through that says, we're not going to give you what you asked for. We're only going to give you a percentage. So there's always a go back and ask kind of thing. Um, but I was very hopeful in that, that email. Um, but I believe we've done as much as we can. And we certainly will, you know, for you all, we will go to those entities to see, you know, is there historic grants that could possibly pick up if, you know, FEMA's not willing to pay that share? But I did want you all to know that that's where we're at. We're kind of stuck. And then FEMA, of course, if we put it on hold, FEMA's not real.
Open. Yep. Nobody's going to meet the timeframe that's currently set, you know? I mean, that's not going to happen. We, we recognize that. So for the thirty days, that's a vote.
No, no, I don't want to.
I was going to say, uh, is tonight a drop, I mean, I understand everything you've said.
Yeah.
My question is, is tonight making a decision to drop their date? Can, can we revisit this area, uh, this, this topic in thirty days?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I, I know you all have worked hard on it. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm starting to feel a little better since you say we've already budgeted for it. But, you know, with the way everything has increased in pricing exponentially, okay? Uh, you know, when you start getting quotes on construction and all that kind of stuff, you know, um, and, and I'm not a carpenter, but you know, the old carpenter's rule is measure twice, cut once. Okay, so that's, that's all I want to do is I'd like a little bit more reassurance in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And we, we don't mind doing that. And I, I will just say this, um, in the interest of transparency, first place we're going to go is back to FEMA.
Yeah.
Okay. But we will certainly, uh, look at other options too that have been brought up.
I, I don't want to beat FEMA to death. I just want to see if we can find some of the areas. And Mr. Ingram, your question, what happens should the timeline that's on the books not be met? And they don't grant extension, what does that do with the funding that they've already agreed to provide? Is that more or less your question?
That was it.
Okay. And we're going to see if we can get an answer for that. We'll be back next month.
Do you have a question, Mr. Bowman?
I do. Uh, just a follow-up question. Thank you. Uh, so the six percent Kim mentioned right there, that's our obligation, right? FEMA's, uh, amount that they've put in here, that's, that's a, a hard figure. That's not going to increase. Um, so.
Not at this time unless we do ask for the extension we asked for the budget increase based on now we have a true figure. Where we were going off of was Dewberry's estimates.
Okay.
And so they review those and I don't know if they put a set of eyes on it and say, no, I think you can do it cheaper. And then they wait till those bids come back. And, you know, of course, we're right on it bringing it to you as soon as we open those. This is the first opportunity. So, um, we wanted you all to be aware of where you stood. We certainly didn't want you to say, well, please approve this and we don't tell you the whole story. Uh, but there is a lot more to it and, um, this has been quite an ordeal.
Right. And I imagine it's.
We put it out to be before, we said, stop the, stop the horses, stop everything until we get more money. And so that's why we're at where we're at and it's taken so long. And now the prices are way more than they would have been. Uh, but we just felt like we've always secured funding before we go through anything. So that's why we knew, you all needed to know where we were tonight. We don't want you to go into it blind, because there is a possibility, hey, we might be on the hook for this.
Right.
And, um, we certainly want you all to have a comfort level before you make a decision.
Yeah, the, um, uh, and that's the reason I asked about the FEMA being hard. We're not guaranteed that they're going to come back and, and approve our request for, you know, the additional amount. And based on the current situations that they're faced with FEMA as a, uh, agency, you know, this may get kicked down the road because it's not really a priority for them right now. So the, the last question I have is going after these other, um, sources, revenue sources to help offset this? I know for a fact, some of these have, when you do these applications, especially formal applications, they have a deadline when these have to be in by. And if you don't meet that deadline, then you've got to wait another year in order to do that. So in fact, those opportunities may have skipped by us for the remainder of this year, just, you know, for the board to think about here. May have been a good opportunity three or four months ago, right after the fiscal year started. But right now it may be something where we go after and they say, no, come back in March or April of next year, you know, and apply for this and we'll see how it plays out. Is that not correct?
That is.
So.
The one philanthropic organization that they have for bigger requests like this, it's only, I think, quarterly that they review them.
Right. So just, just a matter that I wanted to make sure I was on, I'm tracking with you on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Yep.
I agree, Mr. Tucker. I mean, y'all go back and see if there's any other resources out there. Anything will help. We spending the taxpayers' money. We ain't spending ours.
Sure, sure will.
A part of mine, I tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you all. Uh, any other discussion for business purposes, Mr. Houghton?
No, sir.
All right, moving to item eight. Uh, Mr. Hunt, can you read us into closed session?
Yes, sir. Two closed sessions this afternoon. Constitutional legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Legal authority, Virginia Code Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eighty-eight. Subject matters, active nine-one-one slash code grid. Purpose consultation with legal counsel slash legal advice and discussion regarding the same. Second one is personnel. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Legal authority, Virginia Code Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eighty-one. Subject matter, county attorney, performance, purpose, review slash discussion of same.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second. Second by Mr. Whittle. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. We ready to vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Going into closed session, gentlemen. Going into closed session, gentlemen.
Mr. Ingram?
Brenda, leave Ken along, let him get up here.
Yeah, we got it.
You ready, Kayla?
Uh-huh.
Mr. McCloskey, you ready? Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order to Pennsylvania County-
Mr. Dalton. We've got to open back into the work session.
We just need to-
We've got to come out of closed.
We need to certify closed session and then adjourn that meeting and move to work session.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Hunt, read us back in the clo- oh, open session. I get it right.
Yes, sir. Be resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board supervises work session on October 15th, 2024. The board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act and identified the motion authorized in a closed meeting where heard discussed or considered in a closed meeting if any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. I will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Dalton.